We'll ask the clerk if she'll call the role of the board.
Commissioner Blakemore.
Present.
Commissioner Askew.
Here.
Shannon Whitfield.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Stolt.
Okay, as I mentioned earlier there, Commissioner Stolt is not able to be with us tonight. He's dealing with a family medical concern, so keep him in your thoughts and prayers tonight. As we do move forward, Board, I do need to make a motion that we amend the agenda. We received after the agenda was posted, the state documentation for the state recovery funds, the terms and conditions for the public safety officials for the first responder's supplemental pay. And so, we want to make sure we get this executed and make sure that we can get those done and handled for our first responders. So, we'd like to amend the agenda and add Resolution R 5121, so the Board can take action on those items.
Make a motion, we amend the agenda.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Askew to amend the agenda. Any other concerns, questions, or amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the commissioner, excuse me, the agenda is approved as amended. Okay, at this time, our first item that we have is a public hearing for request from Clay Tracy for conditional use variance for property located at 1949 Round Pond Road, Lafette, 30728 tax map impartial, 0428-01A. So, is there anyone here, as the applicant here, that would like to speak about this tonight? If you would please come forward as the applicant. We'll get to you in just a moment, sir. State your name for the record, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Clay Tracy. I appreciate the Board hearing our proposal tonight for the Mobile Home Park. I actually grew up, I lived there for 45 years adjacent to the park. I know very well of the problems associated with the Mobile Home Park. It's been an eyesore for the community, as well as a lot of crime associated with it. My family's tried to buy that piece of property for many, many, many years. My wife and I had the privilege of purchasing it this year, and we're requesting basically that we take it from a Mobile Home Park, long-term rental, which has had some problems, and take it more short-term rental, Airbnbs, things like that, so that we can, we can control more of who's there. We'll make it a family campground and really, really control who's there. The Planning and Zoning Commission actually asked if we put a condition on it, a 14 days, which we have no problem with that at all. We also wanted to incorporate something, really to incorporate the whole Walker Rocks. We think that the, this RV park versus the Mobile Home Park would fit more into the Walker Rocks. We've designed the park, I wish I had the layout for you, we've designed it, so we have some, about a mile of mountain bike trail there. We also have a, we'll have a, at some point, we'll have a small beach area, so we can have some kayaking and some paddleboard and things like that. And that's, that's all I've got, unless you guys have questions.
Any questions in the Board?
I read through it, Mr. Tracy, so you're gonna have X amount of tiny homes and X amount of Mobile Home spots. What were those numbers again?
There are 10 tiny homes and 10 RV spots.
Okay.
Basically, we're just, we're not adding anything to the already grandfathered in Mobile Home Park. We're just asking that those lots basically be taken from long-term to short-term, essentially.
And these one of those lots has its own second system that y'all have looked at?
It does. We've pulled out, we know that there's, there's 20, we went to the Health Department, we found a minimum of 15 of the actual drawings, and we found 20 stub outs. The Walker County Rural Water has the water, and they actually have 20 meters around that.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yes, sir, I think he was wanting to speak next, please. Yeah, please come up. Last, did you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Stanley Jackson. I'm Mac Ship's grandson. Mac owned the farm that was next to the Round Pond. He bought it about 1940 or so. So, my brother and I now own the lot adjacent to Round Pond Lot on the south side. We've owned it for about two years. Ship's been there since about 1940 or so. So, last week, my concerns were noise, alcohol consumption, guns, dogs, trespassers, and thieves on our property. So, I'm gonna skip over that, go through that again, and also, any geological issues that the county might have liability for, for polluting the watershed. There's only about three trailers on that place now that I can see from the road. So, you're talking about what? 13-fold increase in the number of people that are gonna be polluting the land or contributing to the sewage village there? So, I don't know. Looks like somebody needs to check this out before there's a future mini super dump there. Okay, but now, the new stuff I'm concerned about is, I love RV people, but most of them are on vacation and they are ready to party. That's one of the reasons they're RVing, they're partying, right? So, are we gonna have any administrators on site? Are we going to have security on site? Many RVs carry motorcycles and trailers and whatnot. There's two kinds of motorcycles. There's powerful motorcycles that make a lot of noise, and there's two-stroke motorcycles that will absolutely drive you up the wall if you have to listen to them all day long. I'm concerned that there's going to be motorcycle noise coming from down there almost all day long. I don't know if you've ever had to live next to somebody that's got a big machine, but they love to just crank them up and listen to them, even if they're not riding them. That's what they do with them. I'm concerned that there's gonna be kids running two-strokes around that pond all day long. It's okay if you live next to a one-family home and they do it occasionally, but this is gonna be 40 people potentially that are running a two-stroke all day long around that Everybody here has seen the RVs with the little trailer or platform behind them carrying their two-strokes, right? That's what I'm talking about. I'm concerned that they're gonna be running their two-strokes up to the woods next to our property. So, I have to listen to that, and they're getting closer to me now, right? I don't live in that lot now, but my brother may eventually live there. And what I'm here to tell you, motorcycle noise carries for a long time, especially the powerful machines with strike pipes on them. They make your head vibrate. So, I'm, I hope somebody addresses all this. Is there going to be any sort of consideration given to motorcycle noise here? Or is this just handled under some sort of overriding, you have to call the police and complain about it, or what? I mean, where is somebody gonna say, no, this is an RV park, this is a high-density place where people will tend to have these type of machines? I'm worried about this. I don't wanna have to listen to them for the rest of my life. That's one of the reasons I live there. I've tried to get away from this type of stuff, right? But evidently, it's back. They're coming at me. I'm also concerned about non-paying people that are going to be allowed to come to the site and party with the paying people. They met folks, they're gonna be coming in that haven't been vetted by the administration yet, but they just show up. Is anybody gonna vet these people? Suppose all 20 sites were taken up by the same organization. Suppose it was, was a motorcycle organization. Will they have to obtain a special permit or license for an entire organization to have, say, a small convention or something like that there? Is that something that's possible, that I might have to listen to? Okay, and also, I've never owned an RV. I think some RVs are diesel, right? Am I going to have to listen to somebody's diesel running all night? If you've ever stopped at a truck site, truck stop, and you get out of your car, and that's all you hear are those things turning over all night long, and they are loud. So, I'm sure there's gonna be electrical hookups, I mean, I'm assuming there will be, but some folks might wanna run their diesels all night. Am I going to have to listen to that also? So, to reiterate, noise, I do not want to have to listen to people's noise. I do not want to have to take special security precautions, because these people will cross any fence and take anything that's not nailed down. That's my experience. It will happen. And we don't have anybody living there right now, but we do store things there. So, I mean, I don't know what, what we'll have to do, because it will be stolen unless it is chained up and secured. And my experience has been, is that you don't get a lot of response when you do have thieves and trespassers. I mean, you just don't.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Question, where you say, is anybody occupied that property of yours now? You said you don't, and your brother doesn't, neither?
That is correct, although there is a small house there that he may eventually live in. However, he does go there and maintain the place, cleans up and maintains. My Uncle Fletcher has a nice little garden there, and he keeps that, my brother Mark keeps that maintained. And, you know, when you're doing something that's nice and nature-like, you don't want to be listening to somebody down there partying in the pond, right?
I appreciate that answer.
Okay.
Anyone else that wanted to speak on this? Yes, sir. Please state your name, please.
My name's Addison Fields. I'm a property owner very close to the pond. I do not connect to the pond, but it's off Old Dalton Highway. I am for this. I think this would be a great thing, go along with the Walker Rocks. It will allow the, the community to see something there that's presentable. It's always been drugs and all that bad stuff. I think this, we clean this place up, we'll make it a very nice place for campers, RVers to come, come into Walker County, spend their money. It will also let people that don't live in Walker County maybe come down here, and maybe they wanna live here. Maybe they like it here. I think it's a very good opportunity for something like this in the county to be here at this specific location. Thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone from the public that wants to speak? Mr. Tracy, you as the applicant, you're will, you're, you're allowed to come back up, any rebuttal or anything, anything that you would like to address.
Sir, I would like to address the Board. I don't know how much y'all go to campgrounds and things like that. I'm an avid camper. I've been camping for 25 years. I've been to hundreds of RV places, and we don't see the, usually those people pull up in, you know, hundred thousand dollar rigs, and, you know, they're, they're not out to steal people's stuff. They're there to, to relax and have a good time. We've just never seen that. We hadn't seen the, the loose dogs and the gunfire and the craziness. We don't, I've only been to probably two campsites where the loud, the music was a little loud, and those were, you know, backwoods type, not your typical RV places. So, I would like to just let that out there.
And you live adjacent to the property, too, is that correct?
We just sold that farm, yes, sir. I still live within a mile of the place, yes, sir. So, we're, we're very close proximity of-
Land zone.
That's right, yes, sir.
That was my concern.
And a couple, how big is that tract apartment?
I'm sorry?
How big is the tract?
It's almost 17 acres. It's like 16.37, I believe.
Okay. And so, one of the concerns was motorcycles, I mean, you're not gonna have motorcycle trails, are you?
No, sir. We, all we'll have is, is bicycle trails. In fact, we, I mean, we can put a clause on our website that says, you know, no off-road motorcycles. I've, personally, I've never been to an RV place, and like I said, I've been to hundreds of them, and I've never seen a motor, off-road motorcycle there. Yes, occasionally, one would stay at a tiny house or a cabin or something like that, but no different than a, a long-term rental, so. Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move forward with our agenda. We'll close out our public hearing at this time. Board, before you have the minutes from our prior meeting that was held back on October 14th, 2021, here at the Annex III, so you have those minutes. We'll look for a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve.
We do have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Say.
Have a second by Commissioner Blakemore. Any further discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented. Okay, at this time, we do have our public comment section, so if there's anyone from the public that would like to come and speak to address the Board, we do ask you that you keep your comments to five minutes or less, so if there's anyone that would like to speak tonight. Okay, thank you, we'll move forward.
No, you got to-
Oh, I'm sorry, I am so sorry. I'm sorry, I did see.
Oh, no, you go ahead. I didn't know anybody else raised their hand. Please state your name. My name is Karen Bradley. I've had a few things on my mind to bring up, and I've been wanting to bring them up for quite a while, and I just wanted to touch base on this. And I just have basically a few questions, a few statements. And one about the comment part of the, the meeting, I know why you brought it up originally to the very beginning, but sometimes, at the end of the meeting is a better time to have had it. But I'll start. Why is it that the Board, but mainly you, Mr. Whitfield, make serious changes or votes differently than that of the Planning Board's decisions? I've been to several Planning Board meetings, and I've listened to their decisions and the reasons why they brought it up. Then, when you get here, it's changed. The Planning Board makes informative decisions on each and every property that is put in front of them, throwing us, the citizens of Walker County, under the bus each time your grand ideas come to light. 30 years of an abatement to entice a certain business as the Macklemore to come here while others are only getting 10-year abatements. I don't think that the public really understands what the abatement means. And then, making lifetime citizens, as myself, and individuals who actually live or have moved here for the peace and tranquility of our area, only to find out you have made promises or spoke on earlier projects, as you did with the Gateway Project, which then puts the county citizens between a rock and a hard place with that lawsuit, just to really get what you wanted to begin with or in the first place. The Planning Board was put into place to make insightful, detailed, mindful decisions on items brought in front of them and to protect the county as a whole. You, as the Board members, not supposed to be doing the exact, are you, as the Board members, not supposed to be doing the exact same things as the Planning Board? You were voted in to speak for us, the citizens of Walker County, and to represent your own community, as well as Walker County as a whole, not your own interest or your buddies who may be looking to get a piece of the pie. There needs to be a full transparency to this Board, which includes the Chairman's position. Should the Chairman of the Board not remain neutral as impartial, only to make an informative decision and not be at the center of the controversy, subjecting his county citizens to proposed lawsuits, as he did with Gateway Project at the last meeting, and the many more awaiting behind that one? Shannon Whitfield has opened a can of worms, or should I say Pandora's Box, that cannot be closed back quite as easily. There's an article today in the Chattanooga, and I don't know how many people got to read it, because it was only brought to light about the water situation or the water vote that you should be making. I hope you will table that until the citizens actually have a chance to look and read about it. I know it was a short-term release as of Tuesday, and you only have until Sunday to make a decision on it, but I think because more than once Macklemore was mentioned in that article, I think that needs to be thought out a little bit further in detail. Thank you.
Janice Williams, and I hope you'll respect my time as much as I respect yours in coming here today. There is a situation with a rescue, a local rescue. It's been an issue, we cannot get our shelter to work with local rescues. This particular rescue had a concern about a dog. The other dog there died, it starved to death on a chain. They started taking the food, they were trying to get the lady to surrender the dog, and she didn't wanna surrender it. So, they were feeding it and watering it until something could get done. Rossville Police Department went in and seized the dog. I don't think that you understand the difference, I know you don't understand the difference between shelters and rescues, but I don't think you understand what rescues do. Rescues pull dogs from shelters, get them to vet care, get them what they need, and get them adopted, to leave room in the shelter, because we keep, you just on your last life program said our shelter is full and adoptions are down, and unfortunately, euthanasias are up. That's what they do. They pull the dogs, they get them vetted, they get them taken care of, it frees up the shelter, and it saves the animals, and that's what our shelter is for. Our shelter won't work with local rescues. This particular rescue, Rossville PD was fine with them taking that dog, it had to go to the shelter. It had to go through commissioners to get this local rescue that, and I address you with problems and possible solu, probable solutions, I don't call out names, but I'm calling the name out here. Emily Sattler will not work with local rescues. She has personal issues why she doesn't, but who cares? Who cares who likes who? There's a problem, there are solutions available, solve the problem, and everybody work together. And in spite of things that have happened with Emily Sattler and local rescues, they're still chomping at the bit to help our shelter, to help the animals. So, this dog, rather than Emily speaking with the rescue, you're her secretary. You don't have time to take or return my calls, but instead of our shelter director talking to a rescue, you're making the calls for her? Shannon, you're above that. You're the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners. She can pick up the phone and talk to somebody. Nobody cares if anybody likes anybody or not. There's a problem, and they're trying to solve it. So, rather than working with a rescue, and this particular rescue Emily used to be a part of, so she knows how it works, and she knows these people, and she knows what they're trying to do, rather than working with the rescue, they pull the dog and do what needs to be done, no, she's gonna hold it, spay, neuter, vaccinate it, and then they pay her a hundred dollars to pull the dog. What's the point, then? That's what rescues do. Our shelter doesn't work with anybody locally, and not even for spay and neuter, that we can get done a lot cheaper than what you're paying now, but you refuse to work with us. Our county won't, and we formed in this county for that reason, won't work with us, but yet, our shelter director is working with Clayton County, raising funds for spay and neuter in our county. So, she has begged another county for money to spay and neuter, to spay and neuter this dog before the rescue can take it. It's silly. You look foolish by being her secretary and doing her bidding. She's a professional, you have made her the Director of the Shelter, pick up the dog on the phone and talk to people like a professional, and work with the people that are trying to help our county with a problem that we have. The overpopulation of animals is a problem. Everybody's trying to help. They can't even get a return call. And when they finally make an effort, because our other commissioners got involved, because you haven't budged on it, I asked, I did the official request, why won't our shelter director work with local rescues? And the response is, as we have stated before, I have it in writing, it is at the shelter director's discretion. Get your personal feelings out of your discretion. Have something in writing that explains how our shelter operates, what the actual mission is, because it says it's at her discretion how she performs the mission of the shelter. Where is it in writing? What are the reasons that still, after all of this time, local rescues that are licensed, regulated by the state, inspected, flawless in their reputations, no fi, no, no complaints filed against them anywhere, our shelter won't work with the people that are right here trying to do it, but then they go clear to Clayton County to beg for money for what they're doing. It's silly.
Okay.
But this situation has made you look foolish, Shannon, and you're better than that.
Okay, any other public comments?
Yep, Zach Chapman. Thank you, guys. Just reading through the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority information that's put out recently in regards to the money that you guys will be voting on tonight, just have some comments. I don't know if this can be discussion or just my comments here, but the word exorbitant sewer rates are not sustainable, so I'm curious, exorbitant, how that compares to the citizens of what that exorbitant cost is compared to what the 8.7 million dollars would cost those citizens that is serviced by that sewer. The other thing is, Walker County Water and Sewer had no other option but to redirect sewer flowing to Chattanooga back to its own treatment plant. And why were we paying the exorbitant rates to begin with, when all we had to do was send it back? How's that work? And then, basically, if you read the next sentence, "The sewer redirect project is waiting final approval from the Georgia DOT." So, what's really going on? It's not real clear. Can we just send it back? Do we have it, or are we waiting on right-ofways? It's not real clear.
Yeah, those are all very good questions. We'll get to that, I'll cover that, and I'll answer those.
Okay, thank you.
Good questions. Okay, anyone else? Yeah, you'll, you'll need to come up, so we can get you on audio and video, please,
I don't live in the lot adjacent, however, I do live about 1,000 feet further to the west. So, somebody is there on the farm, and, and there are other folks living on the old farm also, so, so there are folks living there. Nobody's on the lot adjacent to the Round Pond Lot yet. Just wanted to make sure that, I think I left that out.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Okay. We're going to move forward on our action items on our agenda. We do have one item of unfinished business. We have ordinance O-0221, amending certain sections of Chapter 2 of the Code of Walker County, Georgia regarding land development, to provide for an effective date to repeal any and all conditional ordinances, or conflicting ordinances, as part of the ordinance to provide, and to provide for other purposes. So, we had quite a bit of discussion at our last Board meeting, there was, we actually took votes and made quite a few changes, so we felt it would be in good order to bring this back before the, the public, just for clarification, and that all of those changes were properly documented per the Board's request, and that the attorney and our Board Clerk captured everything. So, this is just to really to ratify y'all's desires and wishes from the prior meeting, and to make sure everything is in good order and met the expectations of what y'all was hoping to accomplish. So, is there any questions, concerns, or anything on that to, to ratify this as a complete?
No, sir.
Ordinance, okay. So, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve ordinance number O-0221?
Motion to approve.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, this is approved. Okay, under new business, we have a resolution R-4521 authorizing the chief to execute a purchase agreement with Peach State Truck Centers in the amount of $1,392,000. Excuse me. Yeah, okay. And for the purchase of three Class A pumpers to be purchased out of the 2020 Splotch Fund. So Chief Hodges here tonight with some of his team members will ask you to come up and give everyone an overview of the work that y'all have done.
Yes, sir. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. I'm gonna, my comments will be relative to both of the resolutions for the pumper and QRVs. So Walker County Fire Rescue's requesting approval to purchase three purpose-built pumpers and three quick-response vehicles utilizing the current Splotch funding. Walker County is projected to be able to spend $3.75 million on apparatus over the life of the Splotch as long as it collects appropriately. This purchase will replace three current pumpers and three rescue trucks that are currently in our fleet. If it's approved and the new apparatus arrives, which will be roughly 10 to 12 months from now, I will revisit the board and ask them for, to immediately surplus the replacement vehicles so we can utilize the timing and the value we would get back versus them sitting around somewhere. Number one, we don't have any place to put them that would be sitting outside at the shop, and we want to, we want to make sure when we revisit that, that that is something that we're aggressive with to gain, get as much value as we can. We currently have 23 pumpers and 10 quick-response vehicles in our fleet. We have 17 engines and six hose trucks. A hose truck, by our definition, is any pumper that carries more than 2,000 gallons of water. The replacement we're requesting will be for one of the engines. We currently have 17 engines that the average age is 21 years old, 11 of those being 24 years old. So we're overdue in a replacement plan for these pumpers. The hose, the hose trucks have an average li-, average age of 18 years, with our 10 quick-response vehicles being all 20 years old. Our fleet is aging. We currently have 12 apparatus in, in a maintenance shop somewhere, some are in our shop and some are having to be outsourced. Roughly a third of our fleet stay in the shop continuously because of its age and the wear and tear we have on them. This past fiscal year, we spent $187,000 in vehicle maintenance, more than doubling the previous fiscal year. So we are, we're trending in the wrong direction with our, with our maintenance, and we, we need replacements so we can offset some of that. In August of 2020, I asked Deputy Fire Chief Nathan Farrow to establish an apparatus team or committee, if you will. He's not here tonight. He has got a daughter that's a senior at Gordon Lee, and they are in Columbus, Georgia, playing for the state championship, hopefully, so we wish them the best of luck. We do have a couple of members here. I've got Assistant Chief Matt Mills that's here, Captain Robert Stevenson. This committee was formed with seven individuals with a combined years of fire service experience of over 100 years of experience combined, 90 of those years serving Walker County. The team was, was tasked with evaluating researches, researching and developing specifications for a request for proposal focusing on safety, service needs, and associated cost. The only other directive they had from me was that they keep the fire chief out of their meetings, because the last thing that I needed to do was get in the way of those that are working on the apparatus by providing insider suggestions that, that, you know, they would, they would take as that's what we needed to do. So I tried, did my best to stay out of the way. They can, they're probably sitting here laughing because I worked really hard staying out of their way. But this team worked for over two months, meeting with dealers and representatives, evaluating demo trucks, and as a result, built an 11-page proposal that was outstanding. Captain Stevenson led the team. He was, he's done an outstanding job, the entire team did, and they definitely deserve all the credit. They brought a proposal to me that, that needed very little in, in my efforts to make it any better at all. So on October 26, 2020, Chief Farrow submitted a memorandum and a supporting proposal to me for review. On October 27, I, in turn, submitted a memorandum and supporting documents to Chairman Whitfield requesting we meet to discuss the RFP. I met with Chairman Whitfield shortly after the submission of the apparatus team's proposal. It was mutually decided that it would be best to wait to release the RFP until the new form of government, being the Board of Commissioners, began in January, January 1 of 2021, and that we also evaluate and monitor for trending success of our Splotch funding. An RFP was drafted and reviewed by Chairman Whitfield, County Attorney David Gottlieb, and Joe Leguee. The RFP was released July 26, 2021. On August 31, 2021, we received five proposals for both the QRVs and the Class A pumpers. The apparatus team then built an evaluation spreadsheet, which is in the agenda packet, to compare all submitted proposals. The selection was narrowed to two vendors, or dealers, if you will, that were cost-effective for Walker County for both the pumper and the QRV, that met the specifications set forth by the apparatus team and provided in the RFPs. This team attended the Fire Department Instructors Conference, which is the largest, largest conference in the United States, where they evaluated demos from dealers and had in-depth discussion with manufacturers on apparatus. They also traveled to Winchester, Kentucky, and Canton, Georgia to evaluate like apparatus when it was narrowed down to the two that we were looking at, so, so they could evaluate and view extremely close specifications for the pumpers and the QRVs. A unanimous decision was made by all team members in the selection on both the pumpers and the QRVs. On October 19, 2021, I submitted a memorandum to Chairman Whitfield with a recommendation to purchase three pumpers and three QRVs. While the RFP released, had the intent of purchasing two of each with the timeline and the restrictions due to COVID manufacturing issues with the dealers, that the dealers were having, because it was, it was originally thought out that we wanted to do one of each per year of the Splotch cycle, but with it taking 365 days at a minimum to build out these purpose-built units, along with evaluating our Splotch collection, making sure it was sustainable. Vendors are expecting 5% to 10% increases over the next two to three years each year. This, this puts us at the beginning of our third year of Splotch collection, so we discussed, we discussed that it'd be best that we look at going ahead and purchasing three of each. With that, we get like trucks, not anything different. We don't have to put the RFP out again, and it increased some of the savings with our prepaid discount. So we're requesting the total savings with the pre-, with the prepay, this is, that's paying it upfront, paying the total amount upfront, which each dealer would pay for and, and support with, they would execute performance bonds on each, so that would be secured. But the total savings on the total purchase with, on both resolutions together is over $60,000, it's $60,297 if we, if we prepay it, as we're requesting. So again, the, the total savings on the pumper, the three pumpers with the prepaid is $34,371. The QRVs are $25,926 for that $60,297 total. So that's my comments. I'll be glad to answer any questions that the board has.
Questions? Just make sure I understood you correctly. As soon as you get these new trucks in, you'll be selling the old trucks to other fire departments or gov dealers or something.
Yes, sir. We will bring forward six units for you to approve that we surplus.
Okay. But you won't get all the trucks at the same time?
It's two, it's two separate vendors, so, and to be honest, the, we're at the mercy of Ford on the quick-response vehicles. They are probably, it's likely that the purpose-built pumpers will arrive before the QRVs, even though there's, it's less involved.
We can move them individually as you get your new vehicles.
Yes, sir. That would be up to, to you to decide how you want to do that. I will bring it as, as soon as we get them, I would bring that to you.
Okay. That was my question, Chief, was on these, on these Class A pumpers. Do you expect those to come pretty much at one time?
They, they, those, each, each should, each set should come together. We should see the arrival of three Class A pumpers, the bigger engines, and then three QRVs. They'll just be, more than likely, they'll be separate in, in each time of run.
Coming from two different vendors.
Yeah.
Yeah. Outstanding work on this to the team and the leadership of the team and the detailed, you know, check and everything that y'all have done. It's probably the most effort that's been put into specking out a fire truck in our county, and, you know, hats off to the team for all the work that y'all have done to, to make sure we get it, get it right, and I know y'all have spent many, many hours working on this, so thank you for, for your hard work on this.
Yeah, they did. I mean, they spent more time than I did, and I'd, if I had to do it over again, it wouldn't change a thing, and they did an outstanding job.
Awesome.
Okay, any other questions, or Chief? Okay, hearing none, I will read this first resolution. We have here, it says Resolution R-4521, Resolution of the Walker County Board of Commissioners authorizing the chairperson to execute a purchase agreement with Peach State Truck Centers in the amount of $1,349,256 for the purchase of three Class A pumpers to be paid from the 2020 Splotch Fund, whereas the Walker County Fire Rescue requests the purchase of three new Class A pumpers to ensure the continued safety and protection of the citizens of Walker County, whereas a request for proposal, RFP, was published on July 26, 2021, advertised on the Walker County Public Notice Page and posted in the Georgia Procurement Registry, and whereas five responses were submitted and tabulated for responsiveness and reflection of Exhibit A, whereas Walker County Fire Rescue formed an apparatus committee to evaluate each proposal carefully, considering the minimum specifications and associated costs for, before conducting an in-person evaluation, whereas Peach State Truck Center received the recommendations from the Walker County Fire Rescue Apparatus Committee and Fire Chief and has the capa-, and has the capability and skills of providing the desired product to be used by Walker County Rescue, therefore be resolved by the Walker County Board of Commissioners and is hereby solely resolved by the authority of the same of the chairperson is authorized to execute a purchase agreement with Peach State Truck Centers in the amount of $1,349,256 for the purchase of three new Class A pumpers to be paid from the 2020 Special Purpose Local Options Sales Tax, be it further resolved, the Walker County Board of Commissioner grant the chairperson the authorization, to authority, excuse me, to take any and all further action necessary to carry out the intent and the purpose of this resolution, so resolved and adopted the 20th day of October 2021. So do we have any more discussion of the board? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll motion to approve. The resolution is presented.
As we have a motion by Commissioner Askew. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Blakemore. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is approved, unanimous. Okay, the next one is for the QRVs. We'll read this one as well. Resolution of the Walker County Board of Commissioners authorizing the chairperson to execute a purchase agreement with 10 A fire and, 10 A fire and safety equipment in the amount of $788,894, excuse me, 78, let me say that, $788,898 for the purchase of three quick-response vehicles to be paid from the 2020 Splotch Funds, whereas Walker County Fire Rescue requires the purchase of three new quick-response vehicles to ensure the continued safety and protection of the citizens of Walker County, and whereas request for RFPs was published on July 26, advertised on the Walker County Public Notice Web's Page and posted in the Georgia Procurement Registry, and whereas five respondents were submitted and tabulated for responsiveness and reflected on Exhibit B, and whereas Walker County Fire Rescue formed an apparatus committee to evaluate each proposal carefully, considering the minimum specifications and associated costs before conducting an in-person evaluation, whereas eight fire and, excuse me, eight fire and safety equipment received the recommendation from the Walker County Fire Rescue Apparatus Committee and Fire Chief and has the capability and skill of providing the desired product to be used by the Walker County Fire Rescue, therefore be resolved by the Walker County Board of Commissioners and is hereby so resolved by the authority of the same of the chairperson is authorized to execute the purchase agreement with 10 A fire and safety equipment in the amount of $788,898 for the purchase of three quick-response vehicles to be paid from the 2020 Special Purpose Local Options Sales Tax, be it further resolved, the Walker County Board of Commissioners grant the chairperson the authority to take any and all further action necessary to carry out the intent and purpose of this resolution, so resolved and adopted the 20th day of October. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion?
Sir.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is approved. Okay, we have another resolution here today. Resolution R-4721, Resolution of the Walker County Board of Commissioners for the widow, a former Walker County Sheriff's Officer Sergeant Donald Donnie Phillips to retain his service weapon, whereas the county has adopted a policy authorizing retired law enforcement officers upon recommendation of the sheriff or other appropriate commanders shall be entitled to retain their service weapon as part of their compensation, and whereas Sergeant Donnie Don, Donnie, excuse me, Donald Donnie Phillips passed away earlier this year after an extended illness, and whereas Sergeant Phillips provided more than 30 years of honorable service to the citizens of Walker County while working for the Walker County Sheriff's Office, and whereas attached hereto as Exhibit A is a copy of a letter from Sheriff Steve Wilson to Chairman Shannon Cade Whitfield recommending the service weapon issued to Sergeant Phillips be retained by his widow as part of his compensation, therefore be resolved by the Walker County Board of Commissioners that the service weapon issued to Sergeant Donald Donnie Phillips, Gen 5, Glock Model 17, serial number BGYC-358 be retained by the widow of Sergeant Phillips as part of his compensation, so resolved and adopted the 28th day of, 28th day of October 2021. So we have a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion is approved, the resolution. Okay, at this time, I would like to ask Sheriff Steve Wilson and the Phillips family if they would like to come forward, and our sheriff would like to give a presentation to you at this time.
I have with me here my longtime friend, and actually my training officer, when I came to the sheriff's office 35 years ago. Lynn was my partner the first day on the job, and who would have thought 35 years later that we'd be standing up here? She's been a dear friend all those years. Actually, I, I guess I knew her before I knew Donnie. But I also have Madeline, her granddaughter, Kevin, her son, and I'm going to ask these guys here to squeeze in just a little bit. I have current captain of detectives Richie Dye, and retired captain, retired two years ago, or a year and a half ago, Bert Cable, and Bert and Donnie were longtime good friends, extremely good friends, and I've asked them to be here tonight. I don't know if you, any of you knew Donnie, some of you I know did, but a fine man, absolutely one of the finest men you would ever meet. Not only was he a fine man, but he was a great law enforcement officer who served the county with distinction, honesty, and integrity. He was a man, and if he told you something, you, you believed, and you knew it was, you knew it was true and it was accurate, you didn't question it. And there's very few men and people in general that you know, that I know of now, that will tell you those type of things, and, and you can take it to the bank. In other words, a handshake. the bank. In other words, a handshake, if you bought a piece of property from him or you bought a car from him, it was a handshake, you knew the deal was sealed. He was that type of Christian man and he walked it every single day. Just a joy to be around. He knew everything about the sheriff's office. He rose all the way to captain and then semi-retired and took a position as our sergeant in our custodian, that was custodian division. But he knew all the ins and outs, the bells and whistles of gadgets, blue lights, sirens, guns. He could fix anything. He knew how to fix anything. And his memory will live on with us that have known him our entire career. I just thank him for his service to the county. And he knows that, he knew that before he passed away. But as a token of our appreciation, Lynn, we want to, and that Bert, it's under the token, there I didn't grab it, we want to present this resolution from the Board of Commissioners to you and your family. And also, this is the service weapon that he carried at the time of his death. He was ill for almost a year, about nine months, ten months. This is the service weapon that he carried to defend and protect the citizens of this county each and every day. As a token of my appreciation for his service, I want to present this service weapon to you and your family for his service of over thirty years to Walker County. I'm going to ask Jeannie to step up a little closer, Jeannie, get a picture here for Lynn and her family. And if the Board of Commissioners would like to stand up here to, you're part of this.
Get us back here.
I don't, yeah, just come up here where we can all get here together, we'll squeeze in. Takes, took all of us to make this work.
Everybody say cheers.
Smile, it takes several. I'm smiling.
Just continually taking them.
One of them's gonna be good.
Take out a one.
Okay, we're going to move forward to our next resolution, R zero forty-eight dash twenty-one, Resolution of the Walker County Board of Commissioners to authorize the chairperson to execute any and all documents necessary to facilitate the purchase of certain property connected to the Marsh House, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect appropriate revenue sources and expenses relating thereto. Whereas Eval Dana Lot Partial Number One Zero Three One dash Zero Six Nine located just north of the Marsh House was put on the market suddenly in August without any advance notice and was, and whereas Walker County owns the Marsh House located at three oh, three oh eight North Main Street in Lefet. And whereas members of the Walker County Historic Society desire to preserve the Dana Lot for the Marsh House pulled resources together to purchase the property before it could be listed for auction. And whereas the Walker County Historic Preservation Commission is a division of the Walker County Board of Commissioners, whereas after reviewing a request from the Marsh House Board of Trustees in the Walker County Historical Society, the HPC formally recommended the board purchase certain tract of partial of land identified as tax partial one zero three one dash zero six nine, further described as Exhibit A for historic, for historical preservation. And whereas a negotiated sale price of forty-two thousand, eight hundred fifty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents. Therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Walker County does hereby authorize the chairperson to perform all acts necessary to carry out the purchase of the property identified as tax partial one zero three one dash zero six nine to include but not limited to executing any and all option agreements or other documents necessary to facilitate the purchase of that certain tract of parcel of land herein described for the purchase price of forty-two thousand, eight hundred fifty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents. Board of Commissioners also authorized the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect appropriate revenue source and expenses relating thereto. So just a little background on this. Additionally, this is located right next door. It is a small half acre lot. Ms. Dana was a very important member of the Marsh House and spent a lot of time volunteering her time and hours to that organization. And it was her desire also for this property someday to be a part of that campus of the Marsh House. Again, this was a very sudden thing that, that come up. It was going to go on a public auction and so some folks pulled together and was able to purchase the property so they make sure that they could preserve this for the Marsh House. And they have worked through our preservation commission and it is also their recommendation. And in the packet, there is a letter from our chairman, John Culpepper, and from their members requesting that the board purchase this property so it will be preserved as a historical preservation along with the Marsh House. Is there any questions, comments from the board at this time? All right, hearing none, we have a motion to approve this resolution for this purchase.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this resolution is approved. Okay, next resolution, R forty-nine dash twenty-one, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to appoint a member to the Lookout Mountain Community Service Board, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia. And whereas one of the duties delegated to the chairman of the board is to appoint members to all committees of the board with the approval of the board. And whereas the state of Georgia created the Lookout Mountain Community Service Board in accordance with the law. And whereas the bylaws of the Lookout Mountain Community Service Board calls for members to serve three-year terms. And whereas the term of Eddie Upshaw of Walker County member is set to expire on November the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Whereas Mr. Upshaw has provided exceptional representation as a representative of Walker County and desires to continue to serve on the Lookout Mountain Community Service Board. And whereas Chairman Whitfield submits the following appointment to serve as a representative of Walker County on the Lookout Mountain Community Service Board, Eddie Upshaw for a term beginning on November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one and expiring on November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the appointment of Eddie Upshaw is approved. So resolved and adopted the twentieth day of two thousand twenty-one. We did receive a letter from the Lookout Mountain Community Service Board where they were asking for Eddie Upshaw to be reappointed. The county does not give any funding, there's no budget items for Lookout Mountain Community Services, but part of their bylaws being set up by the state as a nonprofit organization, they are required to have representatives from the county. And so it's our responsibility as the governing authority to make those appointments. And it's, at this time, I'd like to make a, a motion as the chairman for this resolution to be approved by this board. So do we have a second at this time?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hart, any further discussion of the board on this appointment? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this resolution and appointment is approved. Okay, I'm gonna, this one's going to be a little bit lengthy because there's a lot to this next one. So I'm going to go ahead and read this resolution and I've got some additional document I'll read and then try to cover the questions that was mentioned earlier as well. Resolution R zero five zero dash twenty-one, Resolution of the Walker County Board of Commissioners to allocate the use of American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand twenty-one funds to cover expenses consistent with the three, well, excuse me, with the requirements of the act. Whereas on March first, two thousand twenty-one, the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand twenty-one, ARPA, was signed into law by the President of the United States. And whereas Section ninety-nine zero one of the ARPA amended Title Six of the Social Security Act to add Section six oh two, which established the coronavirus state physical recovery fund. And in Section six oh three, which established the coronavirus local physical recovery fund, together with the fiscal recovery funds. And whereas Walker County is estimated to receive thirteen million, five hundred fifty thousand, two hundred fifty-six dollars paid in two equal transactions of six million, seven hundred seventy-five thousand, one hundred twenty-eight dollars with the first payment having been received on or about May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, and the second payment to be made no earlier than twelve months after the date of which the first payment is received. And whereas Walker County has established the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand twenty-one Local Physical Recovery Fund to provide for separate accountability of the fiscal recovery funds. And whereas Section six oh three C one provides that the funds may be used to respond to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses and nonprofits, or aid in the impact of industrials such as tourism, travel and hospitality, to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID nineteen public health emergency by providing premium pay to a step, to eligible workers. For the positions of the government services to extend of the reduction of revenue due to COVID nineteen public health emergency related to revenue collections in the most recent full fiscal year prior to the emergency, to make necessary investments in water, sewer or broadband infrastructure. And whereas the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority has embarked on a forty-five million dollar water and sewer system improvement project to provide clean and healthy drinking water to nearly fifty thousand Walker County residents. And whereas the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority requests Walker County to invest five million dollars in the improvement plan to assist in the construction of a water treatment plant, distribution network to supply water throughout the county and enhancements to the, to treat sewer. And whereas the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority plans will improve water quality, water pressure and fire protection throughout the county, addressing public health concerns associated with failing private wells in unserved rural communities, bring a reliable water source to the Girl Scouts Camp Adahia area and support regional economic development opportunities at the McLemore Development on Lookout Mountain. Therefore, the Board of Commissioners, Board of Commissioners of Walker County does hereby authorize the following allocation of expenditures pursuant to the infrastructure provisions of Section six oh three C one of the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand twenty-one as followed. Walker County Water and Sewer Authority Improvement Plan for five million dollars, so resolved and adopted the twentieth day of two thousand twenty-one. Want to read this to you as well. And there's copies of this on the back table, if you can pick up one. We'll also have this on the website. This is, the background for the Walker County Water and Sewer is applying for a twenty million dollar in American Rescue ARPA funding to improve the water system for over fifty thousand Walker County residents. These funds are to be awarded by the state of Georgia Office of the Planning and Budget and are expected to be announced in the first quarter of two thousand twenty-two. The deadline to submit the application is October thirty-first of two thousand twenty-one. The following projects are included in the Walker County Water and Sewer Application. A new twelve million gallon per day water treatment plant replacement located on Lee and Clarkson Road, Chickamauga. The new water plant will utilize membrane filtration technology and has been planned and is currently under development. The centralized treatment plant will remedy the problems of running all groundwater sources through multiple treatment locations. With all the water supplied to the system soon to be originated from the new plant, there must be significant change to the distribution system as a whole to eliminate distribution choke points. This project is estimated to cost eleven point four million dollars. The city of Chattanooga provides treatment for roughly half of the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority customers. Chattanooga is under a consent decree from the U.S. EPA and is charging Walker County exorbitant sewer rates which are not sustainable. Walker County Water and Sewer has no other option but to redirect sewer flow to Chattanooga back to its own treatment plant located off of Highway twenty-seven in Chickamauga. The sewer redirect project is awaiting final approval from GDOT for right-of-way access. The project will also put the infrastructure in place for future connections to process the city of Rossville Sewer. Rossville is also currently sending sewer waste to Chattanooga and has completed an engineer feasibility study to connect to Walker County system. This phase of the project is estimated to cost eight point seven million dollars. Project one A is a water main ductal, ductal iron pipe would be used to extension from the centralized water treatment plant to go nine thousand, six hundred fifty-two linal feet of a sixteen inch along Glass Mill Road and a water main out of ductal iron extension to eighteen thousand, two hundred and four linal feet of a twelve inch line along Old Bethel Road to the intersection of Georgia Highway three forty-one. Estimated cost is seven million, three hundred and ten thousand. Project one B, water main ductal iron extension from Tatum Road, seventeen thousand linal feet of twelve inch pipe up Lookout Mountain to the McLemore Hotel and Conference Center with three pump stations and including two five hundred thousand gallon water storage tanks. This will also, will establish a water connection to provide water to Dade County Water Authority per their request. Estimated cost is seven point five million dollars. Project two, a new four million gallon clear well, or better known as a storage tank at the upgraded water treatment plant. This will provide for adequate water pressure, water storage, excuse me, water storage for spikes and water demand and additional fire protection. Estimated cost, three million, ten thousand dollars. Project three, water main ductal iron extension from the Coke Oven wellfields, seventeen thousand, two hundred and sixty linal feet of twenty-four inch main to the Mountain View Storage Tanks. This will help with the high pressure issues in the north part of our, of our, of our water distribution system. Estimated cost at five point two million dollars. Project four, water main ductal iron extension from the Georgia Alabama State Line, Flaherty Road to Georgia Highway one fifty-seven north to Camp Adahia Road, which is the Girl Scouts camp at Camp Adahia. This will be twenty thousand, two hundred linal feet of six inch pipe that would be laid. Estimated cost, two million, seventy thousand dollars. Fifteen percent of the application criteria with the state is weighted on the local authorities providing matching funds. So the Water and Sewer Authority has been working on the water treatment plant upgrade. If you recall, back in two thousand seventeen, we had one of our main wells come under the influence of surface water. And so we had to go into a bold water advisory at that time. Within a couple of weeks, we were able to bring in a couple of portable filtration trailers that will each filter roughly a million gallons a day. So we have been filtering water out of a portable system since July of two thousand seventeen. As we have studied and looked at different options, working closely with our engineers to try to figure out what the best solution was, because only about a third of our water comes out of that location. We have the Coke Ovens there also in Chickamauga. We also have, have We also have, have wells there and we also have wells down in Kingsington. So, we have three different locations that we have water. So, we asked our engineers to provide us a study to determine how we move forward where we can have a system where 100% of our water is filtered. Today, the only water being filtered is the water at the Chickamauga facility utilizing the temporary filtration. That only covers about a third of our daily distribution. So, the other roughly two-thirds of our water that's going out is not currently being filtered. It's been like that forever. There's never been filtration set up at those other points. Our water supply in our aquifers under our county have always been so good that it has not been necessary to meet state requirements to even have to filter the water. We have been able to exceed those requirements set by the state for safe drinking water just by adding to that water as it goes into the distribution system. But with this failure that we had back in 2017, we don't want to be caught with the potential of having a second failure or a third failure at one of the two other locations. And so, we have been moving forward with the new water filter plant, and we have entered into a contract with a membrane technology company that is currently in the final design stages of building that plant. Estimated to have that plant up and operational by fourth quarter 2023. But with this proposal of these projects, we want to get, again, all water filtered. So, by the new line extensions that we're looking at, this would help us loop our system where we could filter all the water that needs to go throughout, serve all of our community out of one facility. When the engineers looked at the option of multiple plants, different sizes, multiple locations, it was not as cost-effective as having a centralized location. So, one of the next questions that we had was, do we have enough water supply at our Chickamauga facility to meet a 12 million per gallon per day demand? And so, we contracted with another engineering service that came in and did a 45-day drawdown study. So, they drilled test wells and they monitored the flow and depth of the water in our aquifer. They ramped up over a 15-day period to go from zero to 12 million gallons a day of a drawdown. And they made sure we didn't have any changes in our environment, made sure we didn't have any sinkholes, made sure there wasn't any change in the crawfish spring. And so, that drawdown took place for 30 consecutive days where we pulled 12 million gallons a day out of the aquifer for 30 days in a row, nonstop. And then, they add back in the rainfall that you have, so you don't get credit for that. With that, that project test was successful. We were able to pull that amount of water. The aquifer level dropped roughly about seven foot over that period of time. The Georgia EPD, one of the things they're looking for is what your recovery time is. You need to be able to recover back that aquifer level that you started in less than four days. We recovered in less than one hour. So, we knew by that we had a solid water source and had the best location to put the plant, to put in a centralized filtering distribution system that would carry this county into the future for the next 50 years. Concerning the sewer project, when the sewer system was put in over in the Flintstone area, Chattanooga Valley, Happy Valley area, on that side of the ridge, it's all gravity flow sewer. And the way that was put in was to flow north. So, I think there's a couple of pump stations, but the majority of that flow is gravity flow and goes into Chattanooga and was put into place back in the mid-'70s. And they use terracotta pipe. Well, terracotta pipe's good for about 50 years, so we're on borrowed time. So, we have been working and doing some sliplining projects over the last three years to re-slipline that sewer lines to cut down on infiltration of the stormwater coming into the system. Talking about the cost of treatment, back in, excuse me, November of 2016, the board at the Water Authority entered into a new agreement with the Chattanooga Moccasen Bend Treatment Facility to treat the water sewer under the new agreement that was required by the U.S. EPA under the consent decree that the City of Chattanooga was under four infractions of sewer into the Tennessee River. Under that, it changed the dynamics of how the rates and the structure of that agreement was set up. Prior to, on the former agreement, the sewer rates and charges were based off of total sales by the Water Authority to those customers on sewer. So, the Authority would provide data to the City of Chattanooga on water gallons sold. They calculated that by the cost per thousand, and they would send the Authority an invoice. Those invoices would range roughly plus or minus about $60,000 per month for the City of Chattanooga to process that sewer on the north end of the system. Under the new formula and the new rate structure, under the new agreement, it was based off of what's referred to as total flow. Well, total flow means all gallons that flow through the system, including your infiltration due to stormwater. So, we went from paying again plus or minus $60,000 to over $200,000 per month on average. So, again, we don't feel that that is sustainable to our ratepayers. So, what we've had our engineers work up and bring a proposal to the Authority, which the Authority has approved, is a, what we refer to as a redirect project to redirect that sewer back to the Chickamauga facility. But keep in mind, our sewer is gravity flow to the Tennessee line, so we have to pump it back to Chickamauga because we've got to go basically down Highway 2. And if you know the area of Highway 2, it's rolling hills. And so, there's pump stations, we have some areas of gravity, but there will be multiple pump stations. And then, we're hoping if we can get DOD approval for that line to come out around the Jenkins Road area, cut up onto Highway 27 bypass just south of the battlefield, all the way down to about Osborne Road where we have a sewer connection. So, we've got that $8.7 million project to redirect that, but we've got to lay a sewer main to redirect that sewer back to the plant. When the engineers did the assessment, they said this $8.7 million investment, we had about an eight-year return on that money. It'd take about eight years to get the return on that investment of the savings we would have from sending that sewer waste to Chattanooga versus bringing it back to our own facility. Also, Chattanooga, under their consent order, it's published, it's been in the paper many times, that they feel that they will have somewhere between a 7% to 10% rate increase almost on an annual basis. We have found that to be pretty accurate. There was one year they didn't have a rate increase, but their rates have been in that 7% to 8% range every year. So, when you look at that amount of volume, and you start tagging 7%, 8% annually on that, that's got to be passed to the ratepayers because the Authority has to be sustained on the, the rates coming in. The Project 1A for the extension along Glass Mill Road in Old Bethel, right now, if you live in the Old Bethel-Glass Mill Road area, you're not that far the way the crow flies to the Chickamauga facility, but your water is coming from Kingsington. So, that's quite a ways for that water. That's the way the system was set up because it used to be a separate system. This would allow us to lay a line from the water plant and start sending water all the way down to Kingsington, all the way down to the end of our line at Mountain Cove Farms, and be able to provide filtered water through that part of the system. This would also allow us to have the infrastructure where we start looping our system, where we would get the water flow that we needed down to West Cove Road and to serve that community as well with filtered water. And then, we would be able to come off of Tatum Road to be able to take a line with three pump stations up the side of Lookout Mountain. What has prompted this was we were notified by Dade County Water and Sewer Authority that they didn't feel like they had the infrastructure, nor the capacity, nor the water to provide the future growth on Lookout Mountain. All of the customers right now on Lookout Mountain buy their water either from Tennessee American, Dade County Water and Sewer, or Chautauqua County Water. Walker County Water and Sewer currently does not supply any water on top of Lookout Mountain, even though that is Walker County. Currently, there are nine water providers in Walker County to provide water service. As you'll see in here, we still have customers that are on wells because even with nine different providers working together and working in designated service delivery areas, it still takes everybody to pull this off. So, this would allow us also to have two 500,000-gallon storage tanks up there, which will help us to regulate and manage the pressure. Also, it gives you a buffer if you ever had a pump go down, power outage, any of those type of things, you've got a supply. Or, also, it helps us if we have a fire and will have a substantial impact on keeping our ISO rating low with an ISO 3 that we have as we are able to, to build out this system. Because everywhere we're going to be laying line, we're going to be laying fire hydrants at the appropriate locations as well. So, those folks that are on these routes where there's not current fire hydrants, you'll see, you'll be in a position with your homeowners to get a reduction in your homeowners because you have a fire hydrant that's appropriately placed to your residents and they will, most companies will give you a substantial discount. We're hearing people tell us 20%, 25% discount in some carriers to reduce your homeowner's Project number two of the 4 million gallon storage capacity, this also is to help us regulate our pressure, have water storage in case we have demand spikes, and also additional fire protection. There's currently 4 million gallons of storage there today. This would be over and above, but when you have a plant that potentially could produce 12 million gallons a day, this would give us 8 million gallons of reserved storage in case we had a plant outage, power failure, blizzard, any of those type of things, we would have some storage of water, and it also helps us with our pressures. The Coke Oven extension, at our last meeting, a gentleman was very articulate in talking about the high pressure that's over into the Flintstone community, and that's very real because we have the beauty of our rolling hills and valleys and ridges. It also makes a lot of challenges when you're distributing water because it can create a lot of high pressure. And so, on that main line, in some places, we do have as much as 230 pounds of pressure on that line. Preferably, you want to be something in that, say, 30 to 60 pounds of pressure. So, by, the engineers are telling us by replacing and upsizing that, that main to a 24-inch, it's going to give us the ability to address those pressure issues and also give us the amount of flow that we need. But we're not trying to squeeze so much water through a small pipe. We're going to a bigger pipe, flow the same amount of water, but with a lot less pressure. Also, this will help us to be able, again, to, to loop our system. So, the engineers have got it worked out. We also have just recently put in a new pump station there that's about ready to go live that we've been working on for quite some time, and it will help us where we can also send that water from the Coke Ovens that will then come from the plant that will be filtered throughout the system. One of our most critical concerns is up on Flaherty Road on how, off of Highway 157 all the way to the Alabama line. Unfortunately, there's about a 10-mile square area up there where there is no public water at all. Everyone up there is on 100% wells and they're having problems. And so, they come to the county last year. We actually, per their request, entered into an agreement with Fort Payne Water and Sewer where Fort Payne Water was going to extend water up Flaherty Road into Walker County. And so, we were very excited about that, and they were as well, and the citizens were excited. And then, state government regulations caused significant headwinds, we'll call it, and it was not a viable project after state regulations come into play. So, this right here would actually have the Water Authority to make a connection at the Alabama State Line with Fort Payne Water. And so, in the interim, we could purchase water from Fort Payne Water, and since we're licensed as an operator in, in Georgia, then we would be able to distribute water to those houses and also to the camp there that does not have water at all. And so, that is a very, very important project. Again, the grant that we're applying for with the state, 15% of your score is matching funds, and so, this would put us in a position where we would have a $25 million match on a request of $20 million. So, that puts us in a better than a 50% match basis to have a $45 million project if we're successful in getting these funds. It is a very competitive process. There's a lot of communities across the state that are also going after these same funds. We are hopeful that we will receive some funding. We're praying for all the funding, but we are always looking at Plan B. We do have word that through the legislation that our U.S. representatives and the White House is working on for additional infrastructure funds that you're currently hearing about in the media, we're understanding from our state partners that there should be additional water and sewer infrastructure funds coming through the federal government, passed through the states, to local governments in the coming months, hopefully not years. So, this is a, a major, major upgrade to provide water to the community. Also, just wanted to share as one example, there's been question of how we come up with the 50,000 resident number when we only have about 36,000 customers that we serve directly. We do provide the City of Lafette about a million gallons of water a day. So, everybody that's from Rock Springs to Noble, to the north side of Lafette, is receiving filtered water today from Walker County Water and Sewer Authority that's being sold to Lafette and distributed to their customers as well. We do have a connection with the City of Chickamauga, so if they ever have a need, they can also purchase water from our system. We've been having some conversations as we expand this out, being able to make a connection with Walker County Rural Water as a backup secondary emergency connection to them as well. And also, we've had requests from Dade County Water Authority for us to establish a connection to them so they'll have water to be able to abstain growth that's happening on the mountain, both in Walker County and Dade County alike. So, I know that's a lot of ground to cover. It's an extreme amount of money. And so, we do have a, the resolution here that we read. So, is there any questions or comments this time from the board?
One comment. So, there's basically seven projects listed here, and if you add those seven up, it comes up to $45 million. If these projects are listed in order of precedence, correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. So, if we don't get the grant or get a part of the grant, we just work down the list until, yeah, okay.
And part of that too, like the Glass Mill Road, you've got to have that infrastructure in place before you can get to the next one. So, it's, some of that is a little bit of a domino effect.
Right, okay.
Any other questions? Good question.
No, sir.
Any other questions at the board? We will take and put all this information on our website at the county, so this narrative that I read while ago, everything that's in the board packet, and make sure that everybody has access to this information. The, you know, the request is from the Water Authority that the county allocate this $5 million, which we do have on hand. We have received that money, so we do have that money in the bank. And then the Water Authority has allocations of the $20 million, so we have the $25 million ready to go to work. We're just waiting to get this application in for the weekend, by the end of October 31st, and to be able to move forward, and hopefully the state will award us and see the significance and the importance of our project. Any other questions at the board?
Just to clarify, Commissioner Hart asked now, so if we don't receive the grant, we would still have the 20 million from Walker County Water and Sewer?
Yes.
The $5 million that we're looking to allocate with it, so we'd have $25 million to start with?
Exactly.
And then still look to procure more money.
Yeah, more funding will be coming down, yeah. Because just like the water plant, like I say, this is fourth quarter 2023, and we've already got that in motion, that's rolling, we've already entered into contract, the redirect, everything, engineering wise, everything's ready to go. It is sitting on the DOT Commissioner's desk, and we're waiting on final approval to get the right-of-way permits, and then we will put that project out for bid as quickly as possible, because we want to be able to reduce our sewer cost as quickly as we can. But that project as well will probably be from a time of a bidding, executing, install, everything that has to be done, that probably could be as much as a year and a half, two year implementation as well. So this is a long, a long journey, there's a lot involved here, and we've got to get it going. Okay, we have a motion from the board.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Hart, and we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. But Commissioner Askew, any further discussion at the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is approved, the allocation of the $5 million. Okay, we do have a proclamation here tonight I want to read, and Commissioner Hart's also going to be presenting this proclamation at the Lafette High School on the 11th, since I've got to be at another meeting on that day. Proclamation by the Walker County Board of Commissioners, Veterans Day 2021, where as President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed the first Veteran Day proclamation in 1954 and called upon our nation to solemnly remember the sacrifices of all those who fought so valiantly on the sea, in the air, and on foreign shores to preserve our heritage of freedom. And whereas, since the dawn of this nation, veterans have defended our way of life with integrity, dedication, and distinction, and whereas we are proud to honor all veterans for their service, sacrifice, and devotion, and wish to extend the appreciation of our citizens to those who have worn the uniform of the United States Armed Forces, and whereas there are approximately 616,000 veterans in Georgia who by their continued devotion to the highest ideas of citizenship constitute a foundation of both strength and progress in the state. And whereas, over 4,300 Walker County residents devoted their talents to assist our country through military service, according to the latest data from the United States Census Bureau, whereas the Walker County citizens have a rich heritage, excuse me, a rich history of celebrating service members by participating in events like the Lafette Women's Club Veteran Day Program at the Lafette High School and the Tribute to Americans for the Catoosa in Walker County at the Colonnade. Therefore, I, Shannon K. Whitfield, on behalf of the Walker County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim November the 11th, 2021, to be observed as Veterans Day in Walker County, Georgia, in honor of our local veterans and the remembrance of those who devoted their lives to protect our freedom. I call upon the citizens to extend their gratitude and unending support to the many heroes, signed and sealed the 20th day of October 2021. So at this time, I would like all of our veterans in the room tonight to please stand so we can recognize you. I've got several. Thank you for your service. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item that we have here is an intergovernmental agreement, lease agreement with the city of Lafette. Part of our SPOLOSH projects was to install an emergency 911 communication tower to be located on a piece of property with inside the city of Lafette that is owned by the city of Lafette. And so this is a joint project, again, through our SPOLOSH, this is a $1 million project to the penny. And 75% of the proceeds will come from Walker County SPOLOSH funds of $750,000. The city of Lafette is contributing $250,000 to the project and also providing the land for this tower to be located. Our attorney, David Gottlieb, in concert with the attorney of Lafette, his name escapes.
Ron Walmack.
Thank you. Ron Walmack, have worked on this lease agreement to make sure that we capture this, because this will be a communication tower that will be there for many, many years, multiple decades. So at this time, I know our attorney has an update, because this document, we put it on the agenda, we've been trying to get it fleshed out, so our attorney has some additional comments on this.
Thank you. We have proposed a few additional revisions to the proposed agreement that is in the agenda packet, and I want to acknowledge the cooperation by the city officials, the city attorney, and working with me to promptly get this accomplished. Very technically, we have an email where they are confirming their agreement with these couple of revisions. Due to time, we weren't able to literally get it in the package in time. To briefly highlight it, one of the revisions is that the lease term has been increased from 10 years to 25 years, with an additional 25-year option to renew. That is a long period of time, and the reason is because it's a significant investment by both the city and the county to construct and maintain a cellular, well, a tower primarily to be used for 911 services. There's also a minor revision to ensure that any antennas and repeaters that are placed on the tower by either the city or the county will not in any way interfere with the 911 There is a provision regarding some common items such as the generator system, the HVAC system, and the actual building where some of this equipment will be, in terms of joint maintenance and repair and addressing the cost of that. And finally, if this agreement, when it ends, we are given up to a year to literally remove the tower, which is, sounds like a long time, but it's, in addition to the actual dismantling of the tower, it also would give us an opportunity to obtain necessary permits from the FCC to move it if necessary. So we are taking it down, storing it, and then, you know, relocating it a second time. Hopefully, we could make that transition at once. So my recommendation, or my suggestion to the board, is to implement this lease agreement with the revisions that I have just discussed, and I also printed out for each of you an email that highlights these proposed revisions. I would anticipate that these revisions will be formally put into the document tomorrow, and I would ask that you give the chairman the authority to execute the lease agreement once it's in its final form incorporating these revisions. There will be no other substantive revisions to the agreement other than what we have discussed.
Okay. Yeah, and one thing on these communication towers, I mean, we have three other emergency communication towers, and I know at least a couple of those are approaching already 20 years in service, and they're still going strong, so it's not uncommon for these towers to have a life expectancy well north of 20-plus years. And so when we first looked at that, we felt like the 10 years really didn't fit the service life of such equipment. Also, with this communication tower, this also dispatches all the emergency services located here in Lafette that's operated by the city of Lafette as well as the county. So all of our 911 system is a joint cooperation throughout our county for emergency services, so this is a benefit for our entire community. Any further questions or concerns at the board?
No, sir.
Hearing none, a recommendation of our attorney is that we accept this lease agreement with the city and allow the chairman to sign the final document with the final wording based off of these four additional tweaks or revisions that's been outlaid in this email, and this email is between the two attorneys.
Motion to approve.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. But Commissioner Askew, do we have any further discussion at the board?
No, sir.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll get that work completed. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have a purchase order 2022-87, a request by the Walker County Board of Elections to spend $29,997 on extended warranties for voting machines for the, excuse me, for the Dominion Voting System. Funding will be from their 2022 budget for the election office. So at this time, we do have our chairman of our Board of Elections and also our election superintendent, both are here with us tonight. So Ms. Danielle's going to come up first as our election superintendent, so we'll give you the floor unless you give us an overview of this request.
Yeah, so like you said, we're here to discuss a warranty on our voting equipment. Currently, the state is maintaining that warranty because the state purchased this system at the beginning of last year. The voting equipment maintenance will fall to the counties beginning, well, December the 31st, 2021, is when the state will stop, and we will need to pick that up. So the vendor has presented, you know, statewide counties with the warranty information, and when I presented this to my board, and we went through the process and the charges involved with an out-of-warranty repair versus replacing units versus putting a warranty on all of the equipment, the election board decided it would be best to go ahead with the warranty. We thought it was the most cost-effective way to fulfill our obligation with the state to properly maintain these units and keep them in working order, and as you stated, it is in our department budget for fiscal year 2022.
Okay, so if I'm understanding this correctly, assuming that you have 180 voting machines?
There is a lot of components to this system. There are 180 ICX touchscreen units. There are 27 scanner units, and then one central scanner and one ballot-on-demand printer.
So, and as I was saying, there's some networking of units, but you have 180 of the actual touchscreen?
Right, the machine that you touch is, yeah, 180 of those.
Okay. And so I know that y'all's board really looked at this in detail to try to determine if this was the best use of the funds. So how was that vote of your board? Was that a unanimous vote?
Oh, yes.
Okay, was it unanimous vote of your board?
It was.
Okay. Any additional questions at the board?
I've got, I do, and I've asked it, and then y'all have clarified it for me, but I still want to understand.
Sure.
I'm not a big fan of the Dominion machines myself, that's just personal. But I need to understand, is this state, is there state law that mandates us using these, and if it is, is it an OCG? Do we have a section on that?
It is. In 2002, legislation, it went into legislation that the entire state of Georgia would use a uniform system, and at that time, it was the D-Bolt system. That system was in use from 20, I mean, from 2002 until the end of 2019. And then that's when legislation allocated money and the D-Bolt system was purchased and allocated to the entire state.
So basically, we've got these, we've got this system, and we're stuck with it as long as the state is using this system.
We do have to use it as long as the state is using this system.
So we've got this equipment that's got to be maintained.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Danielle? Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I could add a couple thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Danielle.
Thank you, Danielle.
First of all, thanks to Danielle for doing yeoman's work in her due diligence for this. Granted, we are in constant, have been in constant contact with state officials about the matter, she has, and then I've been exposed to others in the state at different times about this. The state dictated with the legislature what equipment we have. The state does not dictate that we have to have the warranty. However, the technical experts associated with the state, with Secretary of State's Office, how shall I phrase this, use the term, look carefully about not doing it? And so the bottom line is, it would appear to us, I'm not a high-risk person, you know, I don't gamble, I don't like to gamble a lot. And it was a unanimous agreement of the five-member board of the Board of Elections that we were running a high risk to the county by assuming the responsibility for paying for repairs on an individual basis, that this was more cost-effective to the county. There are no authorized repair centers, they must be done under state authority with the manufacturer, no matter who the manufacturer is. And the state did look at numerous manufacturers, but we are dependent on them, and this seems to be the most cost-effective way to approach this. Now, these machines will have a life, and at some point, there may be another one. But I really don't expect that to change. Now, y'all probably need to know that cities can do their own thing. They can purchase what they want to. However, in our case, we, cities have an intergovernmental agency agreement with us for us to do it, consequently, they are using the same equipment that you will find in Forsyth County or Chatham County in Savannah, or any other county in this state, you're going to see, you're going to walk in and you will see common equipment. If there are questions?
I just got one other question. Is this warranty, is it just for one year? One year?
It's one year. Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
And it starts January 1, 2022?
22. Yeah. Yes.
They got us.
Yeah.
They, they do. But i-if we have an outage, a, a, um, a couple of pieces of equipment in a year's time, we will, we don't have spent our $29,000.
Do, do we have a, just, just for, just out of curiosity, what does one of those units cost us? If we had just, just one voting machine, one of those, one of these Dominion machines?
You know, I don't know the exact cost on them because that was funded by the legislature.
Okay, so if they go, if they quit, if they, if they break down, we've got this agreement to, to maintain them, but then when, if it's out of service, can't be fixed, are we gonna have to buy another one, or is the state gonna buy it?
No, I think we would have to buy another one. And consequently, as a result of having the warranty, then it would be out of their obligation, I think, to, to repair. I cannot foresee, unless one was blown up, that they could not repair it. But I'll have to tell you that with DEBOB, we had gotten to the point that we were scratching to find parts for that. But, you know, that's a 20-year deal, and, and so I can't predict 20 years from now what, what the lifespan of this machine is.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, on this item, this is an action item of our board, purchase order 2022-87 for the one-year warranty of the Dominion Voting System in the amount of $29,997. Do we have a motion to approve this request from the Board of Elections?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the purchase order is approved as presented. Okay, the next item that we have here is a purchase order 2022-130, a request by the Walker County Public Works Department to spend $88,816 for an F-750 dump truck from Lee Smith out of Chattanooga. This funding will come from the 2022 fiscal budget. We do have the listed, I guess, spec sheet quote that was prepared by them. It has all the details of the truck. Our Public Works Superintendent, Carlin Bowers, has been up and inspected this truck, drove the truck, made sure it was going to meet the needs. One of the unique things about this is this truck is available. As we've talked to earlier, you know, getting chassis of any kind, especially heavy-duty, is hard to come by. And so this is a truck that they had ordered many, many months ago that came in, that happened to catch my eye, and we were able to get a hold on it until we could come before the board to see if the board was agreeing to purchase this. We are getting the government-fleeced concession price on this truck, and basically, once we get our radio system and lights and decal-ing and those type of things, just, it'll only take just a few days, this truck will be ready to put into service. We do have, this is a single-axle dump truck, and I know we do have a few of those trucks that are out of commission at this moment with major mechanical issues, again, part of our aging fleet. So it is the recommendation of our road superintendent, the request to ask the board to approve this purchase request. Have any further questions or discussion of the board?
No, I make a motion that we approve with you adding the extended warranty on this vehicle.
Okay, we've got a motion from Commissioner Blake Moore to approve this with adding an extended warranty. We do have some information that was presented to us on extended warranty, we just gotta figure out those options and, but they're showing as maybe a three-year warranty, as much as about $3,000 to cover the vehicle. So I think it's probably pretty good value there. Okay, so do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second Commissioner Blake Moore's motion with the caveat of making sure we get that extended warranty on there.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion?
So the warranty, Robert, you're talking about it covers that, the DEF system and the retail system?
Well, it'll cover everything. It'll cover the motor, transmission, after treatment, yes.
They just give us several options. We just want to get a little more detail on those.
Gotcha, understood.
It's in the $3,000 range or less.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other discussion? All hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the purchase order is approved as presented. Okay, the next item that we have is a professional service agreement with Retail Strategies LLC to provide consulting and related services related to the retail market in Walker County. This agreement has been vetted out with our attorney. There was some modifications made to this from what was originally presented to make sure that this is in good, good order of our state requirements and also to protect our county. Board, if you will recall, back a few months ago, we made an application for a grant through the Appalachian Regional Commission for $10,000, and that application and grant was approved for Walker County, and that $10,000 was the intentions to pay for this project. So the grant covers 100% of this project. This is a collaboration with our cities as well. So this is training and information and collaboration with the county and our cities, working with this consulting company to help us generate, hopefully, more retail businesses throughout all of Walker County. So this is just the agreement, since we are the physical agent for this grant, and the board approved the application for the grant, and this also being a contract to the county, the board would need to approve this grant, but I did want to share that our cities are a part of this, and the grant covers for the cities as well.
Mm-hmm.
So any questions concerned about this agreement? All hearing none, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Commissioner Blake Moore, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries to approve this agreement. At this time, the request from Clay Tracy for the conditional use variance of property located at 1949 Round Pond Road, Lafette, Georgia, 30728, tax map impartial, 0-482-018A. At this time, we have our Planning Commission Chairman is here with us tonight, and I'd like to call upon him if he would like to come up and give any additional thoughts or comments on this application that's on our agenda.
Yes, good evening, Commissioner. Fortunately, I'm not able to vote on this, and I would like to say that I was in favor for it. I believe we have one that abstained. I mentioned in Arizona, and this is one reason why I said I was glad I couldn't vote on it, because about 17 years ago, I was a partnership in that particular trailer park. Owned it for about five years, sold out of it, just wasn't my thing. It was a very rough park, had a lot of problems with it. Went back to the original owners, they've sold it since then, I understand it's been emptying, and things come out of it since. This idea that he'd come before the board with is a great idea. It's an opportunity for the county to bring in revenue as far as our tourism goes. This helps generate SPOSS funds, T-SPOSS lost. It brings in tourism. One of the biggest things in vacation rentals, whether it's a small, tiny home or a, a RV park, is your reputation. Our city of Chickamauga has too, and that's what keeps those things full. If, if you start having rift rafting, or problems with it, you start losing your customers. And the last thing an owner wants to do when he's got that kind of money invested in something is start bringing in problems with it. So I think this is an opportunity for the county to really see some tourism start coming to our, middle of our county, towards the Lafette end of it, you know, and help promote Walker County and, and Walker County Rocks. So I just wanted to say, in my opinion on it, as a previous owner and the, and knowing the condition it was in, this is, this is a great opportunity to do something with it. I talked to Ms. Tracy after, and pretty much the same infrastructure was there, is then, is still there now. He's also the, from my understanding, is the Director of Environmental Services, so I feel like he's probably gonna do the right thing and make sure everything's done like it's supposed to. But the board voted in favor of it, we have one abstain from it, and think this is a great idea for the community.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Tracy. Okay, so we do have this as an action item for this conditional use variance for property located at 1949 Round Pond Road, Lafette. So any further discussion of the board at this time? Hearing no discussion. What's the board's pleasure on this action item?
I make a motion that we follow the Planning Commission's recommendation and approve this variance.
Okay, so we have a recommendation by Commissioner Blake Moore to follow the recommendation. There is one condition on here I did want to point out that was mentioned earlier, but just to point it out again, that rentals will be limited to 14 days. So that is part of the recommendation of the Planning Commission, is that one condition.
Yeah, we'll leave that on there.
Okay, so we do have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore.
I'll second the motion.
We have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this has been approved with the condition of the 14-day limit to the Okay, at this time of our agenda is for Commissioner comments, so we'll start with Commissioner Blake Moore. Anything he'd like to add?
Just appreciate everybody coming out and getting involved, and thank you, Chief Hawes, thank you for your guys that worked on this with the fire trucks, we appreciate what y'all do. And if anybody, if I can help you in any way, feel free to give me a call, text, email me, whatever.
Ms. Askew?
I just want to recognize today is National First Responders Day, so y'all got a pretty good present there for First Responders Day, but we, in, in all seriousness, and that goes to firefighters, law enforcement, support staff, spouses, I mean, it's not, you know, it's not all glamour and glitz, you know, so we appreciate what you do. Like to, like to thank you guys for that. And I'd like to say that Saturday, October 30th, is the truck-or-treat and moving streets in Chickamauga, which Lafette had theirs tonight, and I didn't know and got rerouted, so. And thank everybody for your participation, for coming and being a part of it, and that they'll be.
Commissioner Hart?
Yeah, I'd like, Shannon mentioned it, but just to point out, if you have veterans in your family or know veterans, the Lafette High School event's a really great thing. It happens on Veterans Day at 8:00 in the morning, so Lafette Women's Club has done that for several years, it's a good event, and I would encourage you, if you know veterans, to get them out to this, it's a great thing. We spent a lot of money tonight.
Invested.
Invested is a better word, yes. So, and, and I just want folks to know that, you know, we really, we, we talked, all of us talked all week about this, and, and different ways to look at it and improve it, to make sure we're making the right decision, because, you know, it's, there's, there's a lot to these things, and a lot of thought that goes into it, so I just want folks to know that we're, we're working on that. Ms. Bradley, you mentioned something that, that I want to address as well, that we've, I've had some concerns about, but Robert Warlaw's working on this, the McMoore Project. So we're, we're currently doing a loci study for that, which is local community investment study, and that study's about complete, should show us how much that's gonna bring into Walker County, and it should be done, Robert, what, you're about through with that, I think information's about in?
I'm saying we're in the next 10 days.
In the next 10 days, that should be in. So that, that should really help us when we look at that project and see what it's gonna do for Walker County. So I'm looking forward to seeing that, and that'll be shared with everybody as well.
And it's being done by?
It's being done by, good point, by Georgia Power. Georgia Power, even though they may not sell power in Walker County, they have people that work for them that are, what's the word, economic developers, that, that look at projects like this, and, and it's kind of a give-back to the community, Georgia Power does, and it, it's a great tool to use and look at, so we look forward to getting that back from Georgia Power. Like I said, Robert's working with them, and, and it should be a good tool for us. Thanks for bringing that up.
And there's also, and that a collaboration with Georgia Tech?
Yes, it's a program that Georgia Tech wrote, that Georgia Power uses, that the data's inputted into it, and it gives back to the county, hey, this is what it's gonna do for your county, so, yes, that's correct.
Very good. I was about to forget something very, very important, and that's where we amended our agenda for another resolution. And when you mentioned this being National First Responders Day, we were about to forget the incentive paid from the state of $1,000 for our first responders, and so, boy, I've really been in trouble.
I think we gave them enough. That's what I was thinking, yeah.
But what this is, this is the state/federal document, so anybody gets bored late tonight, wants to read some pretty boring material, but in essence, what this does is this forms an agreement with the county and the state that the, some of the state's rescue recovery fund dollars, the governor has decided to give $1,000 to every first responder in the state, whether it be city or county, and also to any volunteer firefighters will get $300. So that's pretty simple to me, but it takes a tree to get that done. So our attorney has reviewed this, this is the same document that all 159 counties will have to execute, and also all the cities, everyone that participates in this program has to sign this document. This is a, an electronic document that's done through DocuSign, and so this resolution that we have here tonight would be authorizing the chairman to go online and do this officially, but it needs to be approved by the board, and the state's covering the, the full cost of the $1,000 and the $300, and also they're covering the matching Social Security and Medicare taxes as well, 7.65% is also included in that funding. So each local authority has to process that as payroll, so the proper tax withholdings and benefits and all are calculated, so that's why we're having this, is this gives us the authority to take those dollars and get the funding from the state, and those are earmarked funds that will go for this program. And so our Sheriff's Department, county police, and also our fire department is putting their list together, because we have to have everyone's certification numbers and rank and those type of information, so we want to try to get this into this meeting. We don't like to amend the agenda, because we want people to have plenty of time to review everything, but our concerns were, this come to us after our agenda was already published, and if we didn't get this amended and on the agenda tonight, it would be November the 18th, before it would be on the agenda, time stuff gets to the state and back, we might have missed Christmas. So we want to try to get this money in the hand of our first responders as quickly as possible, and so that's why we elected to amend the agenda, is to expedite this as quickly as we can to get those funds into our first responders' hands. So at this time, I'll read the resolution, R.0-5121, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to authorize the chairperson to execute any and all documents pertaining to the ARPA Coronavirus State Financial Recovery Fund, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas the board has the authority to authorize, provide for the execution of contracts, and whereas the chairperson administers the affairs and day-to-day business of the county, therefore... the chairperson administers the affairs and day-to-day business of the county, therefore be resolved of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, that the board chairperson is hereby authorized and empowered to take all actions necessary or appropriate in the execution of any and all written instruments pertaining to the Georgia ARPA Coronavirus State Financial Recovery Funds on behalf of Walker County, Georgia, so resolved and adopted the 28th day of October 2021. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Blake Moore. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this resolution is approved, and we will get this document executed tomorrow, which will allow our accounting department, working with the departments that this is associated with, to get this done as quickly as possible. Okay, at this time, we do have a need for the board to go into the executive session with our attorney to discuss personnel matters and also to discuss real estate. So do we have a motion? I will, excuse me, I'll make the motion that we go into executive session to discuss real estate and personnel matters. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will recess until after our executive session, and then we will be back. Okay, it is 10:19 still on October the 28th. We just completed our executive session. There's no business to come out of executive session, so do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion from Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.